Good evening. It is March 24th at 6:00 PM. And I call this regularly scheduled meeting to order. Unless there's an objection, seeing none, this meeting is called to order. Councilman Price, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
Yes, please rise if you're able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Will you please join me in the pledge?
We, I need to add something to the agenda. Before the consent, after comments, before the consent agenda, we'd like to invite the youth city council, Mr. Berry, to present. Do I need to add that, or is that just my privilege? Can I do that without objection when we get to it? Okay, thank you. It's just an oversight. Excuse me. Public comments, you'll have three minutes. There's a section at the beginning of the meeting and a section at the end of the meeting. Zachary Humphries and plus the blah blah. Approach the microphone and you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
I'll go over this time.
Okay.
I wanted to first thank Mayor Lynn Deutsch for agreeing to meet with me on April the 7th to potentially work on avoiding the disastrous elements of the 2025 to 45 comprehensive plan. This plan in its current form will irrevocably harm our cultural and ethnic communities, even our Jewish communities, and will further place financial strains on our public employees and contributors, elderly, youth, and other vulnerable communities, not to mention destroy one of Dunwoody's remaining forested areas. There is a hidden end goal to the unspoken parts of this plan. It is evil and it needs to change. I am disappointed that Lynn's state of the city address uploaded to YouTube is not her full speech and thusly it misrepresents and misleads the public. The uploaded version does not include the potential office building to condos conversion that she is looking into being for our downsizing elderly and the middle value housing having our police officers in mind. Their equity concerns should be taken seriously and it is disappointing that you are taking back these concerns by editing it out in the only publicly available recording of your speech. A full version needs to be available to the public. There is no precedent for uploading a partial version of a mayoral state of the city address in Dunwoody's history. Also, the event started at 8:30 AM on a Tuesday and costs $60 to enter. It is credibly inconvenient time-wise and financially for any common member of the public to attend events like this. The public wants to engage in hearing about the state of their city and to restrict their ability to attend and then misrepresent what you said. And the only publicly available version of the speech reeks of bad intentions. Upload the full speech. No one cares about your allergies. It happens to most of us. These events also need to be more accessible to the public and not for you to rub elbows with business executives and other politicians. It is disappointing that I, the only member of the public who wanted to ask a question, was purposely skipped over during the questions in it and answers section. This is our city too. I don't like the sellout energy of the state of the city event embodied. We want to engage in the state of our city, but it seems like you don't want us to even be aware of it. I'm working on reaching out to these and other disrespected groups to make them aware of the ways that they are being mistreated and misled, but it is difficult to do the work that you should be doing in the first place. They're your constituents, Lynn. You should care about them more. I will not let you hide from accountability, Mayor Deutsch. Those days are now over. I believe in change, but I do not play games with the livelihoods of our people. I do not care whether you consider me as an adversarial or hostile figure. Your actions and mismanagement are adversarial and hostile to the public's well-being. People are already mad about the raising property taxes and as well as the comprehensive plan. Sink or swim. Look forward to the second.
Thank you. Lee, okay, on the other side, behind the other column.
Good evening, City Council. You'll have to forgive me. I haven't really had a prepared chance to kind of bullet point my notes here. So I guess I'm going to be speaking from the heart today. So something I want to talk to you about that's near and dear to me that I'm hoping that that city council can help kind of petition is at Dunwoody, we've just done a really great job with different things in regards to our identity, right? So we've got the nature center, we've got a lot of great things going on in the city of Dunwoody. And one of the great things we have is we're turning, I'm going to jump ahead of it, we're turning into a food mecca. Relative, the Brookhaven, Chambly, whenever I'm there, it's painful, you have to drive around till you can find something. That's not the issue in Dunwoody. In fact, the last time, I think most times I need anything in Dunwoody, it's here. We have great quality restaurants, fine dining and three or four steak houses. We have a lot of great options for us. In addition to that, I think the last time me and my neighbor went out to lunch or dinner, we ended up having to sneak in the Sandy Springs because we didn't have a Korean barbecue, but now we're going to have one very nice one there, one very nice one here. Long story short, I'm getting right to the point. We have fantastic food options. So the point of me coming up here is one thing that we could really benefit from would be a raising canes. Now, I'm well aware that city council does not have a magic wand. You cannot force any private business to do anything. So my request here is that we do everything to maybe see about getting a raising canes in the city of Dunwoody. If you look at some of the statistics from, I think, the recent opening in McDonough, I think a lot of these ones that are in Georgia seem to be more on the outskirts. I had to drive 40 minutes to Buford. If you get a chance to get bored, go to Buford, see the raising canes next to the mall. The point, the actual, like I said, the actual point of this conversation is maybe as direct as it is, is if we can do anything at all to maybe ask raising canes, petition raising canes, go in there more as one unified city to see if they might look at Dunwoody as their next home, I really do think there's going to be a dramatic amount of good things that can come out of it. Generally, a lot of traffic, food friendly place. I know they do a lot of sponsorship of local events. Again, that's kind of my comments today, a little bit on the funnier side, nothing very strict, but nevertheless, anything the city can do to just maybe reach out to them, do what we need to do to see if we can get one here, that would be awesome. Besides that, you're doing a great job as always. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. I don't have any other cards. There'll be another section of public comment at the end of the meeting. All right. Since there was no objection, Mr. Berry, do y'all want to come up here? What's your plan?
Well, I'm Mike Berry. I'm the faculty sponsor for U City Council. And I'm here to thank you all for all the support that you guys have offered, U City Council, not just this year, but over the many years we've been doing at Dunwoody High School. We've been fortunate enough to have almost all the city council members come out at different, different times to speak with the students. We've had multiple heads of different departments in the city come out and share with the students about what they do. You guys were generous enough to invite us out here tonight to be presented and to give us a tour of the city and have dinner with the council. So on behalf of the students in Dunwoody High School, I cannot thank the leadership of the city enough for all the support you've given for the students to be able to stay connected with their city government, learn more about how city government works, and hopefully to be, you know, prepared, engaged citizens as they become adults move forward in the future. So thank you all again for all the support, U City Council.
Good evening. I am Maya Popa and I'm a senior at Dunwoody High School and I'm also the president of U City Council. And U City Council is really all about getting to know our local government and encouraging high school students and young adults to get involved, whether that is by voting or attending town meetings or making public comments. So I'd like to thank the council for their support of our goals and also as graduation nears and my time, I, U City Council is coming to an end. And as I reflect, I just really want to thank Mr. Berry and also thank the council for their continued support over these last three years that I've been in the club. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Consent agenda, does anybody have any questions or comments on any of the items?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Rob, second by Tom. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the passage unanimously. Mr. McLeod.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Council. We're bringing this back for the second time. We did have the opportunity to meet with the Sustainability Committee. It was on the second day of the retreat, so I wasn't there, but Paul Leonhardt presented it. They made some edits which are included in the draft. So my comments were in the red and theirs were in the blue, so you could easily tell. And I'll just walk through them. In the table of contents.
Is there something, are you pulling it up or no?
No.
Okay. Okay.
It was in the draft.
Right, okay.
I took out the Director of State of Ability just to clarify the table of contents. I added EarthCraft certified in the definitions. And then in new construction, EarthCraft certification or Energy Star certification were added. And then we took the entire section of 5,000 square feet out of the ordinance. And then in renovations, they added existing buildings just to make sure that we weren't, we're very new buildings, so. And then we also added EarthCraft light standards and the Energy Star certification. So in essence, it simplifies the ordinance. If we don't have to measure the size, it applies with a lead EarthCraft or Energy Star on any of the buildings, city buildings. And then the exception, it appoints myself as Director of Sustainability. And if there, if the project increases in cost and it's too much to do, then I will bring it to you all and you all can decide, so. That's it.
John.
Richard, was there any conflicts between you and the committee? I mean, I saw your colors, their colors, besides a misspelling or two that was one on top of the other. Was there any conflicts between the changes?
No, the only thing was that I had reduced, it used to be 20% cost increase, I had reduced it to 10. They took it out completely and I agreed with them taking it out.
All right, thank you.
Move to approve.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any further discussion, seeing none, I call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that passage unanimously. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Discussion items. Can I give a quick update on the managed lanes and the bus transit, rapid transit? Because we have a few minutes, so. For purposes of the audience and people who might not know, the Georgia Department of Transportation intends to build managed lanes across 285. Originally, it was going to be from Tucker to Vinings, like Cumberland. Now, it's really all the way around 285-ish, not quite all the way around, but 20 to 20. And so, long, five, six years ago, the top end mayors, which were the mayors of the cities along 285, got together to advocate for public transit along those lines, along bus rapid transit, along the top end, along the managed lanes. And we've been working on that. The cities came together and funded studies. Additionally, simultaneously, we also worked on a trail system that would connect all the cities using some, in some cases, using right-of-way or state highway property so that you could, I used to tell people you'd be able to ride from Tucker to Alabama because you'd be able to get to the Comet, the great, what is it called? The Silver Comet Trail, which is in Cobb County on this new addition, and then that goes to Alabama. So, the 400-285 project, which is separate from the top end project, you know, lingered. It took a lot longer than it was supposed to and the top end project is significantly delayed. When we first started talking about it as a council, it should have been finished or well under construction by now. They haven't started. Most recently, we were informed that GDOT's current plan is to build it in phases, which we knew, but the first plan, the plan is now changed to building the lanes westward first. So they'll complete segments going west before they complete segments going east. So, the mayors have asked, what does that mean for transit? Because if you, for example, live in Tucker and you're going to do the bus rapid tran, or Clarkston, and you're going to do bus rapid transit to Primmiter, Dunwoody, for work, coming, because it's going to go east, what are you going to do about getting home? And we haven't gotten a lot of answers from GDOT. The way they'll bid the contract is, is whoever wins, whoever's awarded, you know, phase one, has the right to then start phase, you know, take phase two, et cetera. But we've been working on this transit for seven or eight years and my perspective is, is that they've kind of thrown a big wrench in it because can you be viable if you only go one direction? And I think it's a real shame because that's the best, from my perspective, the best part of the managed lanes was the potential for bus rapid transit. So, we're still meeting because you have to plan decades ahead. They have expressed doubts about putting a station at North Shalaford. Chambly was not represented at the last meeting and we asked them to go talk to Chambly about it. And we would, of course, have the perimeter stop. And where we are with that is we're trying to figure out whether it's going to be an inline stop, which means, you know, the bus pulls up off the interstate and there's a stop right there and then the bus keeps going. Or is it going to come into the Dunwoody Marta Station, drop people off, and then keep going? And the, and the reason those are decision points is, is that the research shows for bus rapid transit, the faster you can get to your destination, the more likely you are to ride it. So instead of having a bus that starts in Clarkston and stops in Tucker and then Dorville, Chambly, or Dorville then Chambly, and then Dunwoody, you would have more routes doing more direct lines. So you would, you would potentially have a bus that just does Clarkston to Dunwoody. Additionally, sort of unrelated, for several, for many years, there have been buses from Cobb and Gwinnett from their own bus lines, having, having a route to Perimeter Center. Those bus lines have not recovered since the pandemic and ridership. And those, some of those routes are ending. And what's happening instead is, is that GDOT is bringing back van pooling. And the good news is, is that the Perimeter Center Improvement District has decided to pay for that service. So they'll be subsidizing what the state doesn't subsidize. So that the people, which it is a small number, but for the people who depended on those routes, sometimes from as far away as St. Douglasville, they will still have access to transportation, presuming that someone volunteers, I guess, to drive the van. And the Perimeter Center Improvement District and their nonprofit perimeter are handling all the logistics and the communication and working with the riders of those transportation sources. So that's my transit update for you all. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. That's it? All right. Public comment. Zach is the only card I have. Here comes.
Over the past weeks, I have sent emails to most city council members to clarify my intentions engaging in local government. It is equity for our public employees and contributors and the security impermanence for our cultural and ethnic communities and other vulnerable groups such as our youth and elderly, and I am willing to collaborate with anyone in achieving it. I would like to discuss the injustice done to Dunwoody's public employees and contributors today. The people who contribute to the well-being of our community and without them, our city would cease to function. It is wrong that many, if not most, of our public employees and contributors are unable to live here in Dunwoody due to its high rent and housing costs. In my conversations with our public employees, they have to live just outside of our borders in Sandy Springs, Dorville, Decatur, and elsewhere. This brings serious concerns about their voting rights and say in their livelihoods. By being financially unable to live here, our public employees and contributors are systematically excluded from being able to vote for policies and public officers who affect their salaries and quality of life, such as the mayor and city council. Their exclusion is a stone's throw away from taxation without representation. And speaking of taxation, these people who very clearly want to live in Dunwoody and whose salaries us taxpayers pay for, end up paying property and sales taxes to different municipalities. Truly wasteful. It flushes our money straight down the toilet. In relying on these other areas to provide our public employees and contributors cheap housing, we have to keep raising their salaries year after year because they're now being priced out of those communities too, ending up further and further away from our city and having to pay more in gas to drive here, not to mention the pointless additional traffic caused by them needing to drive all the way here. We need to start being responsible for our own and stop being so wasteful. In building affordable equity for them, like apartment-style condos and other condos, with relevant tax incentives, subsidies, and rules to prevent the exploitation of outside parties, we can ensure that our public employees and contributors are not financially stripped of their voting rights, have representation in the decisions affecting their livelihoods, can contribute to our diminishing tax base, are able to save and build equity for future homeownership in retirement, can carpool and alleviate traffic in creating a more walkable city, and importantly, are treated with the dignity and respect they rightfully deserve. Our budgetary issues didn't have to be this difficult. We didn't need to potentially raise property taxes, shrinking the pocketbooks of our homeowners and renters. We just needed to have empathy and respect for the people who make Dunwoody so great. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe Hirsch. And you'll have three minutes.
Hey there. So, we all make mistakes. Some of them are harmless, not that big a deal. But when you own up to them, it can improve things. People don't need to be fired for them. You know, you, you make it right. All of you tonight made a careless mistake. The now-approved minutes that y'all unanimously approved listed me as a council member in the last meeting. Thank you, Sharon. But no, I'm not a council member, but you all didn't read it carefully or properly, so I'm now listed as a council member. When mistakes happen though, that are not so careless or minus, or when mistakes happen, we can forgive the person, but when it's not a mistake and it's deliberate, you should not forgive them. I am speaking about Sharon Lowery, Eric Shealy, and Ginger LaPage. Have any of you actually in the last three years asked them what they did with my open records request? Have any of you demonstrated any courage to talk to them? Tom, you're a member of Georgia cities. How do you feel about transparency and knowing that three employees deliberately conspired and lied to me about records that the city has that belong to the public? How does that make you feel? Rob? Do you support transparency? Do you care about city employees that are liars that you just pat on the back? Does it bother you? I don't know. Catherine, I know you were the only council member to speak to me about some transparency issues I had, but I also noted you had the word transparency removed from our city's motto or cause that, that was not good. I only have a minute left. Lynn, your leadership, how's it going with three employees that are facing lawsuits and you, have you taken any action? Stacy, how do you feel about transparency? Joe, where's your courage? Show us what you got. Stand up to employees that aren't doing the right thing. Show us that you care about the citizens instead of just patting them on the back. John, you've always been relatively big on transparency, but when it comes to public records, not a peep. I haven't heard you speak out anything or inquire because our city manager says he doesn't care what goes on with Sharon. It's not his job. He doesn't care about laws that are violated. He says it's not his job. So whose is it? Who on this council wants to show some courage and care about transparency in the city? I haven't heard from a single one of you because it's not getting any cheaper.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. A city manager comments.
Mayor, we do need an executive session to discuss legal and real estate.
Okay. A council comment. Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. So we had our annual retreat on March 12th and 13th this month, a couple of weeks ago. And it was up in Hammersham County and the mayor spoke eloquently about it during the state of the city, paraphrasing that. We've had social media posts as well. And I want to reach out to the public and make sure that what we did there and where, what was the reason and where are we in the journey and what's just kind of level-setting and other folks could chime in as well. But my perspective is I consider us as, we're like the board of directors running a $70 million enterprise. And we did one overnight to help set that vision and direction of that $70 million enterprise of our local government. And I will say that perfectly fine of you're, you're working on a board of director level, making a stipend of $1,000 a month with you have your full-time day jobs, everything else. I respectfully say, you know what? It's good and I appreciate having that time so we can sit aside and really focus on where we're going with the city. In the last, I've been on council now, this is my sixth year, I've taken at least four weeks of vacation days from my day job to take on city council activities and also professional development courses, taking training and whatnot. So I believe that that is not only just above and beyond, but it's, it should be in the job description of being on council. One of the things that we have, we came with a tactical list of action items and you'll see that presented in the future. In the future council meetings, we did it just like last year, we'll have, here's all the things we talked about and we're going to get updates from staff as they go through those things. Okay, so a lot of those may be specific tactical things that we can achieve in a few months and some of them are more aspirational and so on. And one of the more aspirational ones is really the biggest thing that we need to look at is the government of what the city government should look like in the future. Should we look like an Alpharetta, a Swanee, or Roswell? What services do these cities do? How are they organized staff-wise, services? What kind of departments do they have? I know there's people, and we'll get to the talk about our military and so on, but if you look at, that's operational side, right? And then you say, okay, what do they do? And then what do they own? What have they built? Do they have a, a, a community center? Do they have a, do they have a swimming pool? What kind of amenities that are publicly owned by that government that are worthwhile for us to consider also having? I think we have great amenities, but I'd like to keep that in mind. So it's not only, it's our services, but it's also our capital. get that in mind. So it's not only is our services, but it's also our capital investments of what we're gonna build with those money. And um, years ago, and I resp- I respect the, the first mayor, honorable man and everything. I believe that, but I was sitting in a council one time and he said he never thought that our city would even have recreational services, that we would not do, we wouldn't do programming in Parks and Rec. I remember him saying that. And look at all the things we're doing now and, and what we've moved forward on. The, the, the small, minimal, okay, we're gonna pave roads and have policing and so on. So we're doing a lot of things. And so I want to have that conversation with the citizens of what, not only like, some people say, oh, we need to start letting go of staff and cutting back on what we're doing now. Absolutely perfect, just stop, full stop versus what do we really want to look like as a city? And what do we want? And that's up to us to help meet that need of where we look like. Um, and I also, I'm gonna ask the city manager or staff that we could provide, it's hard enough for me to be in the know. If you walk, walk up to somebody to tr- try to define what is our military? Look at your taxes and so on. It's very complicated, right? I can't go in and say, oh, it's three point oh four mil. What does that really mean to people? They get an exemption and so on. Um, when they understand that we cannot mix operation funding with capital funding, when they talk about X, but like, they talk about X, but yet we can't use it for operations, right? So when people think about, oh, we're doing some other initiative, we're building some other infrastructure and they claim that we're not doing things on operations. And people need to understand where the money's coming from as well, right? So when people talk to me, I said, can you, do you have a few minutes for me to just explain to you a little bit? And I hope they would, right? I, everybody has their own issues and so on, but it's really important. I'd love to have a little FAQ. It's probably beyond me of, of having a visual and so on of showing, these are operational money. These pay for our police, they pay for our staff. It pays for us to mow the grass, whatever. That's coming from this one bucket or buckets. And then, okay, well, when we pave roads and we build instruct, in- infra- uh, intersections and put in paths or whatever, that's maybe coming from a different bucket. And so general funds could be moved over to build infrastructure, but the other way around is not so true. So I hope we get to a point where I can just articulate, I can't even, I don't even know anything about host and stuff. It's way too complicated for me to go in the history of what our tax structure looked like. So I, I hope we can really have a simple, explain to person on the street, that, that talk. Um, so I, and that's where we're getting, right? So you're gonna hear conversations with, within the city of where we're gonna be, you know, what we want to look like. And, and that's the decisions we get to make collaboratively here, so. Um, and just in closing, you know, when I was uh, I did a, I did a virtual town hall in twenty twenty when I got elected toward the end of COVID. And I, the analogy is how can we get things done? And I look at it as a four-legged stool, is Jay back there? Jay, Jay's back there, four-legged stool of how to be effective in governance. And we, all the elected officials are one leg because we have, you know, we have a city manager for our government, not a strong mayor, mayor can't veto. So it means we need four votes to do something, whether it's a new policy or budget, right? So how can you affect change and get four votes? Because I was an advocate for many years beforehand I got here. So it's, the four-legged stool is one of us. Then the other leg is the rest of the elected. Okay, can you do something? Yes. Okay, so we could just unilaterally just put something out there. I don't think that's gonna be effective. So we also need our staff and our city managers' expertise and input and advice, so that's a third leg. And fourth leg, most important, is the public, right? So we have to come back to you, but we need at least three legs. We need three legs at least, in my opinion, to get things done, so. Anyway, I just wanted to just kind of let people know. I really appreciate having the retreat. I appreciate the leadership of the mayor. Um, I appreciate what she said at the State of the City and I'm, I'm grateful to be here. Thank you.
Catherine.
Stacy and I welcome you to connect with the council on Saturday, two PM at Good Vibes with the new ice cream place. It's in Dunwoody Village. It's right by barn. So two to four on Saturday, we look forward to meeting you.
No, you do not get free ice cream, but you don't have to buy ice cream to come. Anybody else? So I want to thank the chamber for inviting me to present uh, what we affectionately call the State of the City. We will be doing some other presentations of the State of the City throughout the community. I didn't want to tell first, cause I didn't want to steal it from like the chamber, but we'll be doing something um, probably on a weeknight or weekday and then a Saturday morning to see if that helps people come out. Um, and uh, we look forward to lemonade days, which I think we actually have a council meeting or two before then. Yeah, yeah, yes, we'll be here. And um, it's a big anniversary for the lemonade days. I think it's the twenty-fifth anniversary of lemonade days. It's kind of hard to believe. Um, and I need a motion for executive session. Uh, for legal and, and real estate.
Move to adjourn to executive session for legal and real estate purposes.
Second.
Moved by Rob, second by Tom. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. We shall return.